Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session and we had a little technical extension. I appreciate you taking time to get us back on TV land. Madam Clerk.
So Chair, I would like to revisit the motion on item 13. My understanding is that the motion is to designate Supervisors Toffinelli and Mills and C.A.O. Lutz to serve as liaisons with the COG to outline a transition strategy and bring recommendations back to both boards. We have a motion by Supervisor Garimendi. We do not have a second.
Was it for six months too?
Yes, and it is for six months, for a term up to six months.
Could I have your -- thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You did second that, I believe. Okay. Is that clarification for everybody? Everybody agrees with that? Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to now hear item 20, which is from the Administrative Office, "To authorize the Board Chair to sign a letter of support for the California Association of Resource Conservation District's application for Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant funds."
Good evening. Brian Moss, Administrative Office.
Good evening.
And good evening. This item is an item that the Board heard actually last year. The California Association of Resource Conservation Districts actually did apply for funding last year and they didn't get it. So they're reapplying, I guess they sharpen their pencils, and reapplying for funding again this year. The reason this is important for Calaveras County is because we have a fledgling Resource Conservation District, an RCD. And that's the reason this is even coming before the Board. A couple of years ago, we wouldn't have been addressing this at all. So what the factor is about this is that the California Association of Resource Conservation Districts is really applying for a Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant funds. If successful in those funds, there could be funding that is passed down to our local RCD. And that would be used specifically for tree mortality. So I apologize if this was a last-minute item. Chair Olivera and I had received a request from CARC, just I think it was last week, requesting this letter. It needs to be to them before the, I want to say, the Fourth of September, so therefore it is at the Board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
It's a letter of support. Should add that.
Questions by the Board or staff or Mr. Moss? Supervisor Mills.
And our local RCD now has a building.
They do. They are in the process of getting a building from the Calaveras County Water District, and that is their old building.
Oh, excellent. Further questions or comments by the Board? Public comment?
Easy question. How much money we're talking about? What are the grants? We're talking $100,000, million, 10 million? What kind of money are we talking about on these grants?
Thank you, Mr. Segala. Mr. Moss?
Mr. Segala hit the nail right on the head. Actually, the grant would be for $10 million. And now, as far as that money coming to our local RCD, it could be as little as $5,000 a year. But something certainly is better than nothing at this point. And again, it gets our local RCD on the map, and I think that's what's very, very important. And it gets some support. Because right now, you know, they don't really have the funding to move forward too far. And so they are doing their best to go ahead and get the coffers going so they can actually apply for grants and do some positive things for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Any further public comment? Mr. Edson?
Cliff Edson, San Andreas. I urge you to support the letter of support for the RCD. Our local RCD has been kind of idling for the past year. If you remember right, in 2016, the voters voted it in place. And it was the beginning, really, of, you know, some watershed management that we could do in the county for wildfire reduction. And then right now, in this case, a very good tool to help with tree mortality. It could also help private property owners with burnt trees and things from the fire that are possibilities. So that's what's a cool thing about the RCD, is that it could also be used for private property owners for assistance, you know, to get grants for them too. So I urge you to support this effort and give this RCD Board a chance to get started and get motivated and do some really good things for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edson. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it to the Board. Deliberation or questions?
Supervisor Mills. This is just an opportunity that goes along with, and I know that they will work with the Foothill Fire Safety Council and the other entities that are also currently engaged in this process. So with that, I would like to move the item.
Thank you.
I would second it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved by Supervisor Mills, seconded by Supervisor Toffinelli. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Motion carries 5-0, unanimous.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Now we'll go back to item 14. This item is from Public Works, "To authorize the Board Chair to execute a third amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between Calaveras County and Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the State Route 49 and Mountain Ranch Road intersection, roadway, and pedestrian improvement project for required additional environmental scope of work with an additional budget of $104,676.78, for a total not to exceed of $204,105.78, and to extend the termination date to December 31, 2018. Secondly, to execute a first amendment to the Professional Services Agreement between Calaveras County and Dawkins Engineering Incorporated for engineering services associated with the State Route 49 and Mountain Ranch Road intersection, roadway, and pedestrian improvements project for an additional scope of work with an additional budget of $97,255, for a total not to exceed amount of $495,738, and extend the termination date to December 31, 2018."
Thank you. Mr. Crowitz.
Jeff Crowitz, Public Works. First item is some bookkeeping. Clerical inadvertently included in your agenda packets pages 122 to 145, which were from Agenda Item Number Five. They were the amendment for that item that has already been voted. So it's necessary for us to remove or ignore from this packet pages 122 to 145 and go directly from page in your packet 121 to page 146, where the Third Amendment is in place. Hopefully, that's not too confusing. Apologies for that. This item is a long-term combined funding Public Works project that includes funding from mitigation for the jail and the courthouse and the construction of Jeff Tunnel Drive. And some of the off-site improvements included in this capital project are mitigation for those two projects. So there are funds that came out of those that are being held, both in Public Works and at the state, for that. Additionally, we're utilizing CMAC funds, which are air quality funds, to do pedestrian improvements. We are also including Rule 28 funds, which are funds collected through PG&E for the undergrounding of overhead utilities and improvements. The project proposes to improve the Pope Street intersection, improve sidewalks on both sides of Mountain Ranch Road between Government Center and Highway 49. And this item is to extend and add monies to two contracts that we utilize to complete this project. We have a contract with Stan Tech to do project approval and environmental document, and we have a contract with Dawkins Engineering to do construction documentation. They've both been working along in parallel with each other. And in 2015, we were doing subsurface explorations to identify cultural resources of high concern. It turned out that we did not dig deep enough, and we did not dig in all locations of expected excavations. So it was determined that we needed to go to the next phase of cultural resource excavation that will then give us a deeper document with more mitigation in this area. Supervisor Garimendi, I apologize to you. It just goes on and on. And to fund this, or partially fund this, I suggested earlier in the year with Supervisor Toffinelli that we close a project that we were not making much project progress on, which was a gap fill of sidewalks, a little bit on Highway 49, and then on the opposite side of the street from where we did construct sidewalks going down School Street to the high school. So we closed that project. COG went through the process of deobligating it through the F-Tip, Federal Transportation Improvement Program, and we earmarked those monies and moved them into this project to make it whole. In addition, you have noticed that there is a curb cut for pedestrians between the Government Center and the hospital that were installed as part of the improvements with Jeff Tunnel Drive. There was anticipation at that time that there was going to be a crosswalk at that location. Previous three or four prior to my tenure, Public Works Directors ago, did not want to put a pedestrian crosswalk in there. I believe that there is a safe way to do it with a pedestrian activated advance warning signals that identify that there's a pedestrian who wishes to cross. That allows traffic to slow down in this 25 mile per hour zone before the pedestrian enters the crosswalk. Once the crosswalk is cleared, it's cleared, and we go back to normal operation. So this change also accommodates the design and installation for that accommodation, so that we are not forcing pedestrians to walk from the new Pope Street intersection all the way to Highway 49, cross the street, and then come down the opposite side of Mountain Ranch Road if they want to travel between the Medical Center and Government Center, or the Medical Center and DMV, CHP, CAL FIRE, courthouse, jail, facility. That is basically what this item is. I hope I've given you a sufficient background. It is a multi-agency project with multi-funding streams.
Thank you, Mr. Crowitz. Supervisor Toffinelli.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Jeff, you mentioned that part of this is because we didn't dig in all the right places and we didn't dig to the right depths.
That's correct.
Who identified the digging areas and the depths?
It was Stan Tech, our environmental consultant, without benefit of input from local knowledgeable native sources.
And who is responsible for that?
Stan Tech.
Also, on this item, it talks about, has this project changed? I mean, this project has been in work since 2010 or '12, when Jeff Tunnel Drive was in progress, and all of this is supposed to go. So has this project changed, other than the environment, take out the environmental portion of it? We had concept drawings.
Yes.
Has that changed?
No. Well, there's a couple of things that have changed. There was underground utility conduits that were installed as part of the Jeff Tunnel Drive project for future streetlights and for future electrical.
Correct.
That PG&E tested and found to be wanting. So the scope of work has creeped from PG&E's perspective with the undergrounding portion on the portion between Jeff Tunnel Drive and Government Center. And then the other scope of that has changed on this project is really the pedestrian crosswalk, Government Center to the Medical Center.
But even so, I question the second part of this, where it says that Doken wants an additional $100,000 for additional scope of work. And you're saying that that's for the pedestrian improvements?
It's not just those pedestrian improvements. It is their full design. It represents our cost of delay, and it also represents the change of scope. In other words, there is additional coordination that's being required for location of the excavations for cultural. It is the additional coordination with PG&E to locate from their composite drawings, and their composite drawings represent cable, phone, power, and communications, county communications.
So then my question is, is San Tech was the one that fouled this whole process. Why aren't they the ones paying the additional costs? If I, as a contractor, foul something in the field, it's my cost. I have to fix it. I can't go back to the general contractor or the owner and say, gee, I need more money. So I don't understand the concept of these coming to us like this when, if they were incorrect in their assumptions on their own, and they didn't do what they were supposed to do on their own, why we end up paying for it when we had a contract for their services to provide this?
And the only answer that I can give you, and it's not, probably going to be a very good one, and this is essentially somewhat hearsay, is that the initial bid from Stan Tech included very limited research into archaeological sites or archaeological resources. When they discovered that there was a potential, what should we say, site of concern, because they were not published on state databases, they expanded within their current scope some of the work. And that work was done.
Okay. And let's just say, for the sake of okay, has that work been done now?
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't been done?
It has not been done.
Okay. So when we put out the RFI for this, in the scope of work that was on that RFI, it didn't say just kind of cover if you think so? It ran the gamut of what they were supposed to be bidding on, did it not?
It does, but it doesn't -- I'm trying to think about a clear way I can explain this to you. The scope of work is what they anticipate. So they go to the databases and say, we anticipate historical site, we anticipate cultural site, we anticipate endangered species, and then we know everything else that we're supposed to be doing. Okay? As we got into the project, it turns out that there was a village located here, in San Andreas, where Mountain Ranch Road, where the hospital sits, here. And it was occupied full-time.
Where the hospital sits?
Yeah.
So when we built the hospital, we didn't discover it?
No, because it was, at that time, it was federal legislation under NEPA that would identify it and not state legislation on SEQA. So if it was built with state-only funds, at that time, there was no requirement to identify it. And if you don't have a nationally recognized tribe of concern, you go out to the Western Miwoks, Jackson Miwoks, the Twalamee Miwoks, who are nationally recognized, they give you an answer that says, yes, concern, or no, not much concern. So no, it was not brought up back then. At least, this is my understanding. This is way before my tenure.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Supervisor Clapp, do you have a comment? Okay. I have a question, just so, for the purpose of clarity. You inherited this problem, sir. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we're seeking a solution to it.
Yes.
And this is a solution?
This is a solution. So.
That's all I have.
The only thing I can say is that I think that we are actually getting better and more knowledgeable about cultural resources within our county, especially those that are of great concern to our eastern Miwok tribe that are working their way through national recognition. And so we are getting through our projects. They are costing us a lot more. But nationally recognized or non-nationally recognized, the resources are still there, and we still have a responsibility to mitigate our impacts to those.
Supervisor Garimendi.
I mean, I recognize that the needs of the tribes and the importance of that. I think my concern continues to come back to the consulting firms that, you know, borrow your watch and then tell you the time and then tell you you need a new watch, and only they consult to you. That's just continuing. So I'm hoping, going forward, they will take these into account, because there's no stream that hasn't been mined here. There's been a lot of bodies over this land. They're calling every stack of rocks an archaeological site. We're never going to get to the end, and I hope that they stop this process over time. I mean, or get the bid correct rather than continually change. And I recognize that this is a different time.
And, you know, I mean, if you can say, I'm not calling it a benefit of the fire-kill tree removal program, but that did and continues to build a database of sites of concern. So we now know where they are. And every time we do a project like Railroad Flat, we know where we have sites of concern. So we don't step into that mine again.
Further comments?
And no reflection on you at all, Jeff. My concern was what's going on here, because it continually comes, it seems like. I'm in construction and I have a contractor's license. I can't do the stuff that's going on. So that was my concern. But even so, when we gave them the contract, we hired them to be our experts. We don't know. You tell us. You be our experts. And they came forward with an RFI, proposal for the RFI, and we said, okay, based on, you know. So it just, seeing this continually coming back and continually coming back, not just this particular item, but other items keep coming back for more money, it just seems to me that they go in knowing that they're going to come back wanting more money. We'll bid low, and we'll get the low price, and then we'll just keep going. So eventually, we milk the cow until it's dry. I just don't see the additional costs, especially for the engineering portion of it, when it was already, we had a conceptual drawing, and they'd been working on it for the last four or five years. Now they want another year and three months. Extension plus another 100 grand. It just bothers me. And it wasn't a reflection on you. Because I know you were.
There hasn't been a lot of work on this project going on since the discovery that our excavations were not deep enough to identify cultural resources, and there weren't enough polite locations. So since then, it has been a matter of figuring out what we're going to do, moving ahead with design with PG&E, so that we knew where they wanted us to dig, so that we were accurate, and so that we don't make the mistake again. So that's what has been going on the last two and a half years. Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills, board. Let's stretch this thing out. We're going to be here till midnight. I think you're learning too, Jeff, is how we build an RFP is a great determiner on what kind of response you're going to get. And the better that you know what those potentials are, is how you develop that RFP. I worked undergrounding at places like Livermore Lab, and one of the things that we always put back in to our contract negotiation was a rock clause. Okay, you're laughing. You know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely.
Because that's the way out. We always looked for what kind of an option or way out can we build into our response to that RFP? And if they took it, hey, we were home free, because then the change orders could come. And we also had, as you remember, as a contractor, how much of a percentage could you alter an original contract before you have to go back to renegotiate? It's 15 percent. And once you go beyond that and change orders, you had to go back to renegotiate the contract. So we're not doing that in government, which is kind of weird, but that's the way the code is written. So people who bid these kind of contracts with government know full well that that door is open, and they use it. So it's no reflection on you. It's simply, we're learning the process here.
The door is open on the service contracts. The door is not open on construction contracts.
No, no, it's, you're right. Construction's different.
Okay.
Okay. Further comments?
Thank you, Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. It seems reasonable that the scope of work changes, that a change order is appropriate because the contractor who bid the job could not be responsible for unknown circumstances, probably the rock clause you're talking about. The underlying problem here is unreasonable regulations. I don't know the solution to that, but first step would probably be find out just how much money is being wasted because of these regulations. How much money is being wasted? Okay, if the job is 100,000, and you end up spending 300,000, well, my God, you're spending three times the cost. At some point, it needs to be known just how much money is wasted on unreasonable regulations. Now, what is reasonable? Well, if you have a cemetery or Native Americans, that probably should be reserved or in some way protected. But the compensation for that would probably be, the people that are most interested in that would be the native population. They might be interested in actually raising some money to protect their heritage. You know, they don't own the property that the grave is on, but since they have a responsibility for creating these regulations, they might also share the responsibility for some of the cost. I don't think that's going to fly with the state, but it's another approach. And the first step would be to keep track of how much is being lost to the taxpayers because of these type of regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Yes, Bill McManus, also as a contractor. I remember when you developed a bid or an estimate, that was not just your starting point, that was the ending point too. That's what you were going to charge. You agreed to do the job for that amount of money. If along the way, something happened which jeopardized the job, it was up to the contractor and the consumer to work that out. It's like, you know, you're not going to get a very good job, and no one knew about it. And you arrived at an equitable solution for both parties, and the job continued on. I want to thank Supervisor Toffinelli for challenging this. I had friends in the contracting business that looked at government like a big, huge ATM machine, that if they could just get the first contract in, they could keep pulling the lever and punching the buttons on that machine, and quite possibly, that would be the last job they'd ever have to do in their career. So it takes courage to challenge the system. I'm glad someone has real-life experience that knows what it's like. I'm glad someone has real-life experience that knows what it's like. Sometimes you have to eat a job, and that's no fun, but it's good that you challenge what's going on because I've seen a lot of these things come before the board, and it's just five-oh, bam, out the door they go. And, you know, we just start the Calaveras printing machine up again and start paying for the stuff. So, I want to thank Supervisor Tofanelli for the challenge to this, and I hope that they can consolidate this project, get it going, make that accommodation with a customer, which is people of Calaveras County with these contractors, and just get the job done. You know, it'll be really nice, too, if they paved Mountain Ranch Road from Highway 49 up to Government Center. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Further comments by the public? Seeing none, moving it back to the board. Entertain a motion?
I will move this item, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Tofanelli?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Garamendi. No further public comment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Motion carries five-zero, unanimous. Madam Clerk?
Item 15 is from Behavioral Health Services Mental Health Program to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to apply for a State of California Department of Housing and Community Development HCD No Place Like Home Technical Assistance Planning Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good, how are you? Members of the board. Kristin Brinkes, Health and Human Services. The item before you today is a request for the board to adopt a resolution that allows Health and Human Services Agency to apply for a non-competitive $75,000 planning and technical assistance grant through the Housing and Community Development Department at the state level, and this is a planning and design technical assistance grant to prepare for the No Place Like Home funding that will be coming out in late 2018. No Place Like Home is an opportunity for California counties to further the permanent supportive housing options for clients that are severely mentally ill within the community, coupled with case management services. Just to be clear, at this point, this is very, very preliminary. This is simply a technical assistance grant that will allow us to design, do feasibility study, identify if this is something, a funding source that we'd like to pursue for this community. We are looking at partnering with our local counties. We've began speaking with Amador, Twalomee, and then, of course, Mariposa Counties, given we are all parts of the continuum of care. And so, we're looking at ways to identify administrative efficiencies by developing kind of a singular type of model that we can then kind of make modifications that are reflective of the communities that we serve. And again, this is a $75,000 technical assistance grant, and come late 2018, we know that we will, Calaveras County has the opportunity, if we determine this is a funding source we want to pursue, to obtain $500,000 in non-competitive funds for the development of permanent supportive housing. And then there are competitive opportunities available, too, if we wish to pursue those. Take any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Public comment? Mr. Mauer, your staff, you can comment during, you do not limit to three minutes, sir.
I just wanted to briefly say that I support this. You know, the housing element has identified needs for very special populations, as would qualify for that. We need every help we can get in getting affordable housing in the community for a broad range of populations, workforce housing, special needs housing, you name it. We'll be looking at a housing element update before we know it, and it'd be good to have something on our resume to say, here's what we've done. So, I would support going after this grant, sort of the stepping stone for seeing what opportunities we have available, and perhaps it might be worthwhile pursuing some of these other grants in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further staff presentation? Any further public comment presentation? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Supervisor Garamendi? Lights are moved. Moved by Supervisor Garamendi?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills? No further public comment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five-zero, unanimous.
You can go home now, Kristin.
Item 16 is from the...
Thank you, staff, for hanging in there.
Judy's going to be there alone.
Item 16 is from the Planning Department to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17. 98 to clarify reconsideration of project decisions and find that the proposed amendment is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15601B3 of the SEQA guidelines.
Good evening, gentlemen. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, really sort of a cleanup amendment. Under the amendment, or Appeal section, we came across a section, well, it was sort of discovered through some of the cannabis appeals that we've had, a confusing section of the code that could be read several different ways. Some of the appellantants have been trying to use that as a way to create an endless loop of appeals and reconsideration, and this just hopefully clarifies what was intended by this. The language was amended back in 1992. It was supposed to clarify it. I don't think it did. Hopefully, this one does. What we're proposing is the Section 1798.060 be deleted primarily to eliminate the Section B of, subsection B, because that's the confusing part. The sections of A and C plus additional provisions are moved to the front since they apply to the whole section. Worked with county council on this, and the Planning Commission heard this back on August 10th, a three-zero vote. There were two absent members. They recommended that you adopt this ordinance amendment. So, I would recommend that you find that it is exempt from SEQA.
I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, could you turn your mic on? Thank you, sir.
The way it was written is kind of repetitive.
Exactly.
Yeah, you could keep going back and forth.
And so, I think there was some confusion between the terms reconsideration and appeal. In this case, we made it very clear the difference. You have provisions in your procedural documents about how you reconsider things. The Planning Commission is also going through changes to their procedural documents, and we're adding provisions for reconsideration in the procedures. So, I think this clarifies things, and hopefully, we won't have this endless loop.
I was trying to see, do you have a...
No, no. Hey, I want to go home, too, so it's okay. I'm done. Yeah, it is. It is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
Any questions?
Further questions? Supervisor Mills, your light's off, okay. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, council question. This is a majority vote item. Okay. I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Mills, seconded by Supervisor Garamendi. All in favor indicate by saying aye. I'm sorry. Public comment? No further public comment? All indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Motion carries five-zero, unanimous.
Thank you. Good night, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Power.
Item 17 is from Human Resources. Introduce, after a waiver of the reading requirements and ordinance, adopting changes consistent with the modified and extended MOU with Service Employees International Union Local 1021 for the Board of Supervisors.
Good evening, Chair, Board members. I, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. Traditionally, the Board of Superv, the Board makes changes in benefits for the Board of Supervisors in a manner consistent with represented and unrepresented employee groups. This ordinance shall amend the previous ordinance for your benefits. The benefit changes were, that you'll be following with SEIU, were approved by this Board on August 8th, and the changes will bring the health care, the county contribution to health care for employee to 597.72, for employee plus one, $1,165.40, and then family coverage, $1,542.84. The effective date of this ordinance will be 30 days after the Board adoption per Government Code 25123, and so I will be bringing this back for the adoption at the next Board meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Questions of Ms. Hawkins by the Board? Seeing none, public comment? Mrs. Gallagher?
My compliments to Mrs. Hawkins. This is probably the first time we've had sunshine on supervisor compensation that went to the public. This is very good. What we think should be considered is an alternate way of setting supervisor salaries. Not that you're not worth all the money you get. You are. You're good people, but when you make decisions on representing the taxpayer and negotiating with the unions, and you're part of the package that you give them, there's an implication of something not being right there. I understand that not all public bodies use this method that you're using. I understand you can use a judiciary or some other ways of fixing your salaries that's not under your own vote, under your own control. Perhaps the CAO could check with what other jurisdictions are doing, and you could perhaps consider an alternative way. It's not implying that you would deliberately raise people's salaries in order to raise your own, and that's not implied at all. It's just not, it gives the appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hawkins, any response?
And to be clear, this is just the contribution to health care, and this is not an increase to salaries.
Ms. Hawkins, I have a question. Is it mandatory that, in this particular situation, would supervisors take this benefit? Is there an alternative method?
You do...
Up to the individual's choice, which is available to all the employees of the county. In lieu of, maybe?
I would have to check with county council. I don't know.
I can answer the question, Chair.
Supervisor Mills?
I don't take the employee health plan for myself or my wife, and we get the in lieu, I think it was $300 a month or something like that.
Right. We only have one, and if you look at the amount of money that is, that this is being affected, we do only have, I believe, one board member who is taking health care.
And that member is? Your Board Chair. Okay. Any further questions of Ms. Hawkins? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
For that one member, I would motion, make the motion.
Moved by Supervisor Mills?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Tofanelli. Any further public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five-zero, unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Item 18 is from Human Resources. Introduce, after a waiver of the reading requirements and ordinance, adopting changes consistent with the modified and extended MOU with Service Employees International Union Local 1021 for elected officials.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. Once again, this is also an ordinance to increase the county contribution to health care. This ordinance, once adopted, will also have a 30-day waiting period before it is effective.
Thank you. Question of the Board. Have we had an opportunity to review the Board packet regarding these appointments? And Madam Clerk?
No, no, we're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're still on item 18.
Eighteen, I'm sorry.
This is elected officials.
And this is for, right, this is for the county health care for elected officials, and so the elected officials is the assessor, the auditor, controller, clerk recorder, coroner, district attorney, treasurer, tax collector, and sheriff.
Questions of Ms. Hawkins? Seeing no questions, public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board, and I'll entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Tofanelli?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Mills. Any further public comment? I'll bring it back for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five-zero, unanimous.
Good night, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Item 19 is from the Board of Supervisors. The appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. The item you have before you today is for three appointments for three vacancies. We've received three applications, so usually, the way this is handled is unless there's a reason to separate one of the appointments out, they will all be acted upon at one time. So, the first vacancy is on the IHSS Advisory Committee. This vacancy was advertised in May 2017. It's one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/18 for a general public representative. We have an application from Jennifer Priest. The second is for the Library Commission. This vacancy was advertised in May 2017. One vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/18 for a member-at-large. We have an application from Kathleen Copeland. And the last is for the Commission on Aging. This vacancy was advertised August 2017. One vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/19 for District One, Representative Two, Barbara Shaw.
Okay. Any public comment? No public comment? Any comments deliberation by the Board? Supervisor Tofanelli?
I would move this item, Mr. Chair.
It's moved by Supervisor Tofanelli?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Mills. Once again, request for public comment. Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion carries five-zero, unanimous.
Thank you, Chair. The last item on the agenda, regular agenda, is from County Council to receive a general training on the Brown Act.
Can we please have a five-minute break so we can set up the PowerPoint presentation?
Five minutes?
Actually, can we want to do our announcements while you're set up?
Sure.
We can do that. I would direct that we do our announcements while they're setting up, as Chair.
Okay, so Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.D, this is the time for Board members to report on meetings attended on behalf of the county and to carry out their duties as a county supervisor.
Supervisor Clapp, would you like to start?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to let people know that I'll be having a town hall meeting this Friday between six and seven, and Supervisor Tofanelli will be there, and myself. And so, I hope everyone comes there, and if you're really upset about something, Supervisor Tofanelli will take care of that.
You did not announce the location, Supervisor Clapp.
Oh, okay, so I guess the people want to come see us. Anyway, I'll be in Ginnie Lena at the firehouse, and again, I'll be from six to seven, and I hope to see everybody there. Thank you, Gary.
Supervisor Mills?
August 9th, Wednesday, attended Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Basin Authority with CCWD and Stanislaw County as we begin to discuss the structure of how to equitably pay for the required basin plan. Our point was to have those creating the greatest risk also should pay the greater share of the costs, and this is an in-process situation. Bylaws and Conflict of Interest Code were formally adopted with a proposal spent $35,000 to contract with GEI to prepare the Prop 1 GSP grant application. The county's participants... The county's participation in this is not optional. August tenth, Thursday, attended Murphy's Sanitary District updates to the wastewater treatment plant, beginning of their capital improvement, number one sewer line upgrade along Highway four, and their pond floor overflow contingency plan. The board did discuss grease trap inspections being done quarterly and how to gain compliance with longstanding problems. A smoke test class was conducted in Murphy's on August fourteenth, as MSD is the only equipment in the county. And five CCWD, three Calabres Public, and two Murphy's Sanitary went through it and received certifications. Attended American Legion ambulance annual report luncheon on Sutter Creek with Supervisor Olivera. Cutting-edge technology there, you probably would agree, they're doing a lot of things that are not being done by other ambulance systems in our area. Attended Coppropolis Fire District where water enhancement fee ordinance was a hot topic. Friday, attended the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Bank of Stockton in Angels Camp. Met with Angels Camp manager and finance officer over their visions for the visitors' bureau, transit needs, and the city relationship to the county. We talked about the bypass and some of the other things of that. Met with a member of the workforce planning group looking at how our economic development coordinator and many other private-public partnerships can work to train up our future workforce in the county. August fourteenth, Monday, met with the CIO, Environmental Health Director, to get an update on the progress of mapping environmental damage from all sources in the county and how we communicate between departments. And that is continuing to move forward even as we speak, so thank you to the CIO for that. Strategy sessions, of course, were conducted and appreciate the staff's openness to help us to develop a clear direction. Thursday, attended the Foothill Fire Safe Council meeting. Cowfire will put ten engines and crews into the ranger unit over the winter to focus on fuels reduction, and it will include forestry or support the needed work. That's, that's a first for this county, so that's all part of Tramortownity. Central Fire wants to continue to map the second half of their district using a GIS overlay. The next step will be up its pass, it works well, but to Supervisor Guerra Mendy, Central Fire is also trying to find ways to remove logs from private property that were cut down by PG&E and stacked and just left there, and they're trying to figure out how to, what to do with them. Saturday, attended Angels Murphy's Annual Shrimp Feed in Murphy's. Monday, inspected cow waste transfer facility in Toyon area with Supervisor Olivera and staff from the county. Excellent start, I think it's very obvious that that will result in some significant cost reductions as they move their system forward. Wednesday, attended the CCWD board meeting, discussed, discussion to approve the purchase of the cataract mine slurry line and the easements to begin the process to replace the redwood storage tanks in District Three and to transfer the old CCWD admin building to the Calabres Resource District, Conservation District. August twenty-eighth, Monday, attended the presentation by E-Corp to study, a study to prove the needs for water into the future of twenty seventy and beyond on the McCollum River as a result of AB one forty-two Wild and Zenic, and to initiate conversation as to how the water districts will respond to the San Miquin Basin needs on the west side of the county. This is a great cooperative work being done between Calabres Public and CCWD, it's quite refreshing. One interesting point to this, there is a part of our county that is not fed by the Calabres McCollum or the Stanislaw watersheds. I did not know that. Monday, and then we also went Tuesday, met with representatives from CSA four this morning on unvet needs of completing basic road repairs within the CSA this year. They have a substantial reserve of over three hundred thousand to handle the work. The problem is, should another declaration be required, we'll have a hard time proving we've maintained the roads in that area, which could create financial liability.
Thank you, Supervisor Mann. Supervisor Tofanelli?
Wow, that's a hard act to follow, I.
No, no.
I have, I have nothing to report.
I think, I think that we ought to consider what we're doing here on evenings, meetings. My understanding is that we've, we, these were originally set up to have public participation. It's ten o'clock at night, I got a, I got the cannabis alliance, I got the anti-cannabis guys, and I got Al, and then everybody else is at home watching us and eating popcorn. So I think we ought to seriously consider what we're doing here and if this is something we want to continue as a board. Staff has been staying, staff has pulled lots of overtime. We have this videotape, you can watch it anytime you want. I hope we'll consider at the next time we have a Tuesday evening meeting whether this is a good idea in achieving our goals. I'd like to actually take a poll of the board on something else that was brought to me by one of my constituents, and I know it's a controversial issue, but I think it's one we ought to at least talk about, and that is fireworks sales. And a lot of our nonprofits in our community make money in the Fourth of July, it's an important part of their budget, but it also poses a grave risk to, to life and property. And I'd like to see whether there's any interest in this board discussing this, and I'm not saying which way I'm thinking about it, but it's clear and present, and we have to talk about it. Is there any interest in that? Could be the third rail, I don't know.
I, as a request by Supervisor Guerra Mendy to poll the board to place this on a future agenda to discuss. Are we clear on that, on that request? As Chair, I would, I would honor that request for a poll for a future agenda item to discuss this. Supervisor Tofanelli?
I'm fine.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yeah, let's make it at midnight, though.
Supervisor Mills?
I won't be at midnight, but I'll go ahead with it.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, you made the request, and I, I would agree to put this on a future agenda to discuss.
I recognize this is complex and-
It is very complex, but we can discuss that once agenda is.
That's all I've got, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to be very short and sweet here, if you will. Besides attending the meetings with Supervisor Mills on the cow waste site, the shrimp feed, and also ambulance, American Legion ambulance, I went, I also was impressed with that operation. I just wish we had resources to place better service throughout the entire county. Our one thousand square miles is not, is overwhelming at times to get response, and thank God do ambulance services like Evans Pass Fire, Copper Fire, American Legion, they do a great job with the resources they have. Excuse me while my battery went dead. It is.
I was gonna turn the lights off and sneak out.
No, you can't. And I'm gonna reserve the rest till later on. I mean, one or all.
Thank you, boy.
You stole all my thunder, you guys. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-one is from County Council to receive a general training on the Brown Act.
Good evening, Board. Welcome to the August twenty-ninth Brown Act training. As the agenda, as the agenda-
No.
As the agenda packet indicated, this is information, it's an informational item, so there will be no action taken tonight. Our office is providing this refresher training to provide assistance to not only the board, but also to the various committees and commissions that are appointed by the board that are subject to the Brown Act. The county encourages transparency, and so it's important that everyone be aware of the laws and the parameters that govern the open meeting laws. It's a topic of public interest, so my office is actually hoping to provide more trainings to the board and to these various committees and commissions in the future. Also, just for introduction purposes, I think all of you know who I am, Megan Steadfield, County Counsel, and this is Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel. Thank you. Also, I know it's ten o'clock at night, everyone wants this to be brief, so we will be brief, but I also want to be thorough.
We'll try to be funny, too.
I don't know about that, she may be. Laws evolve, and so it's always nice to know a little bit of the history of where laws come from. California law has always required that public agencies conduct their meetings in public. That was in place long before the Brown Act was actually instituted. However, in nineteen fifty-one, there was a San Francisco Chronicle reporter, his name was Mike Harris, and he did a ten-part expose, and he discovered that there was rampant violations of this open, of the open meeting laws at the time. He did spend six weeks on reporting on this, and he ultimately did a ten-piece, or a ten-part series entitled Your Secret Government. In response to Mr. Harris's article, Modesto Assemblyman Ralph M. Brown introduced the legislation that we now know as the Brown Act. It overwhelmingly passed the legislature, and the, and the Brown Act was signed into law in nineteen fifty-three by then-Governor Earl Warren. Over the years, the Brown Act has evolved, but there are some very key parts of the Brown Act that remain intact and haven't changed since nineteen fifty-three. The two main parts are the intent and one key provision that I will get to later in the presentation. As you know, the board are elected, you are an elected board and you govern on behalf of the people. The primary intent of the Brown Act is to preserve openness in local government, so that includes discussion, deliberation, and action by the legislative body on public business. The key tenet to the Brown Act is to involve the public, so that would allow the public to observe, monitor, and evaluate the legislative body's actions. The Act seeks free exchange of ideas, so it's really getting a lot of public participation. Ultimately, the goal is to create a culture of compliance where transparency becomes automatic. The Brown Act, as you will hear, it's not just the board, the legislative body of the county, but it's also to all the various appointed members and committees and commissions where the board appoints them, and it's either a standing committee or it is even advisory to the board. The Brown Act applies in many, many commissions and commissions that you may not otherwise assume. This is the, this is a sentence that I previously indicated that hasn't changed since nineteen fifty-three. As I indicated, there are two key parts of the Brown Act that have not changed, the intent and this sentence. All meetings of a legislative body by, of a local agency shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting. The reason that the, that all meetings legislative body and open and public are read and underlined is because these are the questions or caveats that, that you really need to ask yourself. One, is it truly a meeting? Two, is who you are meeting with a quorum of the legislative body? So let's have a little bit of interaction here. You sit on a five-member board, what's a quorum? Three, if you're sitting on a seven-member board, what's a quorum? Thank you. And then finally, what does it mean to have it open and public under the Brown Act? So those are some key questions that you need to keep in the back of your mind. With that, I will hand it over to Ms. Moss Lewis.
Okay, we already know that the Board of Supervisors is a legislative body. County residents directly elect members of the board, the board meets at a regular time and place to conduct the county's business. This is the easy part. So we know that at meetings like this, where the board is meeting at a pre-arranged date and time in its chambers, we know that the Brown Act applies to these meetings. So what's not so easy or intuitive is when the Board of Supervisors appoints other people to form a commission or an advisory body. These are not elected officers, and they might be just appointed officers, they generally can't make their own binding laws and rules, they are subservient to the Board of Supervisors. Nonetheless, under the Brown Act, a commission committee or an advisory body is generally seen as an extension of the legislative body, and its meetings are also subject to the Brown Act. And this is true regardless of how few people are appointed to the commission committee or advisory body. So you don't have to appoint five people to an advisory body in order for the Brown Act to apply. Let's say, for example, the board wanted to form a standing committee to meet once a month here in the board chambers to analyze and discuss what ice cream flavors are trending in the state of California, so that they can make an annual recommendation to the board about what to serve at the ice cream social. Okay? Let's say the board appointed two board members and two members of the public to this committee. It wouldn't matter whether the ice cream committee, which is a standing committee, involved only two members of the board, the ice cream committee would be seen as an extension of the legislative body, and it would be subject to the Brown Act. So if both board members met with one of the public members to discuss ice cream committee business, this would be a majority of a Brown Act committee, even though it's not a majority of the board talking to each other. And this discussion would therefore be subject to the Brown Act. If they were talking ice cream, they would have to do so at an open public meeting. Why? Because the board said, we want to have, appoint these delegates to conduct ice cream business for us, they are now an extension of the board, the Brown Act applies to those formerly created standing committees. Now, if the ice cream committee voted to form a standing subcommittee, right, because we know that what committees do, they form subcommittees. Let's say it consists of one of the board members and one of the public members, and their subcommittee meets quarterly at the library to discuss a more complicated and controversial committee issue. Let's say whether to permanently eliminate mint chip as a plausible flavor. Okay? So would this subcommittee be subject to the Brown Act? Anybody have any answer? I see a nod, a tired nod from Supervisor Mills. Okay, the meeting of the subcommittee would still be seen as an extension of the legislative body, and these two people could not meet together to discuss eliminating mint chip without complying with the Brown Act. So the moral of the story is if a legislative body takes formal action to create a committee, commission, or advisory committee and directs that it meet regularly to discuss certain specific tasks or issues, the meetings of this committee will generally be subject to the Brown Act. And if the committee takes formal action to form a regularly meeting subcommittee of indefinite duration, this subcommittee will also generally be subject to the Brown Act. Any questions about that? Okay. We're not done, ice cream goes further. Okay, so, so legislative body exception. There is an exception to the rule about board-appointed committees needing to follow the Brown Act, and that is the ad hoc committee exception, okay? An ad hoc committee is a committee that's formally created by a legislative body that one, has a purely advisory function, two, is comprised solely of less than a quorum of the board, so that's two of you, and three, it has a sunset date after which the committee will dissolve. Under these limited circumstances, even if the ad hoc committee is formally created by the board to do board business, under these circumstances, the Brown Act does not apply. So if the board decides to appoint two of its members to a mint chip ad hoc committee to study the viability of the flavor and to make a recommendation in three months about whether or not it should be eliminated from future ice cream socials, no one other than these two board members were appointed to the mint chip committee, and these two members can now meet anywhere, anytime, to discuss this topic without having to worry about the Brown Act. And that's because the mint chip committee is an ad hoc committee, and the legislature decided it was more important, perhaps more efficient, to allow these sorts of time-limited, topic-limited study groups to conduct their business on behalf of the public without all the logistics of arranging for an open public meeting. So that's why ad hoc committees are exempt. Again, ad hoc committee, purely advisory, no continuing subject matter jurisdiction after it dissolves, has to have a meeting schedule fixed by formal action of the board, and it has to be two members of, it has to be less than a quorum comprising only members of the legislative body. So let's move on to, because there has been some confusion about this, what is not a legislative body? And if it's not a legislative body at all, the Brown Act doesn't apply. So I, forget about the slide right now, because it's very unusual for an advisory committee to be created by a single county officer. If that were to happen, that's, they would not be subject to the Brown Act. I want to talk about something else. Let's say the board has never been concerned. Let's say the board has never been concerned about what ice cream is served at the annual ice cream social, right? And we're just pretending that you're not concerned, okay? And it's always just been left up to staff to decide. So there is no formally-created standing committee about ice cream. There is no formally-created ad hoc committee to deal with mint chip. So let's just say two very smart members of the board happen to have concerns about the possible ramifications of serving mint chip next year. All right? So they decide on their own to get together once a month and meet with ice cream experts to analyze whether mint chip might cause a problem. Okay? Have they violated the Brown Act? I see a couple. Anybody think they violated the Brown Act? They haven't, because... Because it's, well, it's because it's only two, and because there's, go ahead, do now the answer.
They're not a former's committee. That's just...
Right. It's just two supervisors getting together to decide something on their own, so just the two of them can talk, and it might be about something that has relevance to the county, but no, the board had not taken any formal action to actually formally do business regarding ice cream, and therefore, it's not a legislative body.
So, okay, because I was asking what kind of ice cream would you like to have in the ice cream social?
What did you say? Sorry, you don't have to. Okay. All right. Okay. And as you all know, less than a quorum of a legislative body can meet with each other and with members of other legislative bodies. If two of you decide to meet with two members of the Angels Camp City Council to talk about ice cream, yeah? Not okay?
Cock, I can't.
You can't talk about ice cream.
I can't talk about anything regarding the state of the country.
Or let's say that you...
But they're set on board, you know. So if I talk to a period, and I talk to one member of the city council, I cannot talk to them, they're...
If they're on cock. You're assuming if the board members are on cock.
Or another JPA.
Or another JPA. Okay. I see what, I see, that's more complicated than this training is, but you guys have, seem to have the math down, so we can move on to the, to the next slide.
Sorry, Susan.
I can't keep up with that. Okay.
She got the card up.
All right. The Brown Act applies, now that, we talked about whether it's a legislative body, now we have to talk about, is it a meeting? Because not every time board members go out and talk or talk to other people, it's not always a meeting. So let's talk about that. Okay? And we know if it is a meeting, there's all sorts of rules you have to follow to make sure it's open and public. So let's talk about what comprises a meeting. Meeting is any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that it was within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So what this slide basically is trying to say is that if you are having an open public meeting, you gotta be in this, you have, you have to do it, oh, I'm not saying this right. I want to not give the impression that all meetings that are considered a meeting under the Brown Act have to take place in a board chamber. You can have a prohibited meeting outside of the board chamber, but if you are having an open public meeting that you're posting and agendizing, your regular meetings as a legislative body do have to take place at the same place, same time. You can't decide to convene at Starbucks one time just to shake it up. Okay? So that aside, let's just focus, let's break this down. Okay? If we're talking about a five-member board, more than two supervisors together, you may be having a meeting. Okay? If there's three or more of you together in this building every other Tuesday, you may be having a meeting. And if the three or more of you are talking here in this building every other Tuesday, and you're talking with each other in an effort to make decisions, you may be having a meeting. And if the things that the three or more of you are talking about with each other every other Tuesday in this building are the types of things a Board of Supervisors has authority over, you are definitely having a meeting. And therefore, the open meeting provisions of the Brown Act apply, and there's a lot of rules you have to follow to ensure that the public has access to the discussions. We'll talk about what you have to do a little bit later on. Let's go to prohibited meetings.
I have a question before you move on. Getting back to this three, and what constitutes a meeting. If I was to call in on a conference call to participate in a meeting, I have to post where I'm at?
That's correct.
In my location, so the public can access that location if they are there?
That's correct. I believe there was actually a case involving a board member in a hospital. You probably have all, if you've been to the Brown Act trainings, you've heard of this. And basically, the rule is, even though in reality, the chances that anybody is waiting to see the meeting agenda posted outside of the ICU, ICU unit is pretty low, the actual rule is wherever you are, you have to post it in case some member of the public might want to come in and participate on your end of the meeting.
It's also stated, and I need some clarification on this, that if, if, if I don't advertise where I'm at, but I join in a conference call, that I can't vote on anything.
That, I'm not sure.
I can help here. This happened at CCWD, where a director decided he was going to call in a conference call from Sacramento International Airport, but he had not posted that he was going to be there 72 hours in advance, so therefore, council told him to hang up.
Yeah, that was my question.
You cannot even, you cannot even listen in on the meeting. You are done.
That's where I was headed.
Yeah.
Not only can I not vote, but I'm not even allowed to be there and listen in and partake in any discussion.
Not partake in any discussion. I don't think that there's anything that would preclude you from listening as a member of the public, but, but you essentially become a member of the public.
So you have to speak at public, comment, period.
Comment and all that, yes.
I suppose if a member of the public can watch the board on, on TV from home, that you should be able to watch it from your own home, as long as your, your phone, as long as you're not, you're not participating in it.
However, if you wanted to participate, you could post your notice at your home 72 hours in advance and participate as you would a board member. I've seen that happen too, where somebody was out of surgery or something like that, and they needed to participate. So there are rules around that.
Yeah. However, there is limitation that if it is posted, then the location that you are participating from becomes a public area that the meeting is...
That is correct. Get out the coffee, because if friends want to show up, they can come in your house.
Could I just ask for clarification on the previous slide? So on my understanding, that you're saying that all four of those elements together constitute a violation?
No. I gotta tell you...
Or any of them?
I don't like this slide. Megan and I talked about this earlier, that we did borrow somebody else's presentation, and I, in part, and I think that, that this slide is sort of putting together the public meeting requirement, if you're trying to have a public meeting, and mixing it up a little bit with what would be a prohibited meeting. So I would ignore the part that says, "In order to have a meeting, everybody has to be in the same time at the same place." But it basically, I think the takeaway is that if there is a majority of a legislative body that are together to discuss, deliberate, decide, take action on any item, and the, on any matter of the public business, and it's the type of matter that the board could potentially have authority over, then that discussion has to be at an open public meeting.
And just to clarify, what is here is the general rule. I think the, the area that Supervisor Tofanelli brought up about accessing remotely or participating remotely are exceptions. This is the general rule.
So we'll talk about what's prohibited now. I'm going to move past...
So that didn't really answer my question? My question is, is that, is it required that, is it the same time and place? Because what I heard you say was that if it was in this room. So, but if they were at lunch, if there was three at lunch together, and they were not discussing public business, then that is okay. But if they were discussing business under their subject matter jurisdiction, then that is considered...
Yes.
A prohibited meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, being together, I mean, being together at lunch where people can see you is not always a good idea from possibly just a public perception standpoint. We, you know, we tend to advise against that just as a prophylactic, but you can, you know, as long as you're not talking about, oh my gosh, but as long as you're not talking about public business at the, at the, at lunch, then you're okay.
The reason I ask is just for the members of the public who are maybe on a board's committee or commission that would be watching this portion of the meeting, and that they clearly understand that it's not specifically at your location, that it could be considered someplace else.
Right. I think what I, what this slide is trying to say that, is that when you know that you're going to be conducting business as a majority of the board, you have to do it at the regularly-scheduled location that you have announced as your regular meeting place. Legislative bodies for the, under the Brown Act are supposed to have their, their meetings at regularly-scheduled times in, in a place that's publicly accessible. And so as long as any meeting that's taking place, or discussion or communication that's taking place outside of that location is not within the Brown Act, you're okay. But if it were outside of the Brown Act, I mean, you would need to really, you can't have that meeting unless you're in, unless you're in your regular location.
I would just clarify, the purpose of this slide is really to inform any member of a legislative body that a meeting can be created essentially at any place, any location. So the concern is when you have a quorum that comes together, and you start to talk about something that is within your subject matter jurisdiction. So essentially, whether you're doing it over lunch, whether you're doing it at, you know, three of you happen to get together at a social meeting, the social gathering is exempt. However, if you were to get together at that non-Brown Act gathering and start to discuss something that is within your subject matter jurisdiction, you are creating a meeting by that interaction. Does that clarify?
Taking an example like say, Clyde, you want to hit your mic for the folks?
Gary and myself are going to conduct a town hall meeting this Friday, so that wouldn't stop Dennis from coming there to heckle us or give us a bad time. He could still do that, I believe, as long as we weren't discussing...
Well, if Supervisor Mills is heckling you by, by way of having a discussion with, with you about whatever the item is...
Something that we would...
That would be different than Supervisor Mills just having banals at us.
I would caution that situation.
So you can't come at time, that's what?
There, we will be getting to certain exemptions, so...
Counsel?
Yes.
In this scenario, where we have three members of forum, meeting in a, on an unscheduled meeting, if you will, and discussing subject material that has already been decided by the board, that still falls within the Brown Act or does not fall within the Brown Act?
If it's not something that's already been decided, the test is whether it's the type of thing that could be within the jurisdiction of the board. If it's been decided, it could always come back and be decided again differently.
Okay.
So if it's, if you're talking about the foreign policy in Ghana, then that's okay, because you don't have any authority over that. If you're talking about, you know, whether to do some, some public works contract that you just approved, theoretically, that contract could come back, there could be reconsideration. So if it's within your authority, I don't think you can talk about that. Andrew's not?
We would caution the board, or any, any legislative body from, from doing that, because if the topic is within your jurisdiction, then, then we would caution you on doing that when there is a quorum present.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk, I think it'll be easier, I think maybe some of Ms. Everud's questions and some of your questions will be answered better when we started, Bob. Start with prohibited meetings. This is about when communications between supervisors might cross a line and become a meeting, in which case, it's a problem, because you're not having it in your regularly-scheduled location that's noticed to the public. So it's not always intuitive. It's, most Brown Act violations are not intentional, and they're not necessarily caused by just one person, they're not necessarily one person's fault. But the thing to remember is the county, or the board as a whole, can commit a Brown Act violation, even if we can't pin it on one particular supervisor, and the county can have liability for a Brown Act violation. So you'll see how things can accidentally, communications can accidentally become Brown Act violations through some of these examples. Okay? Going back to the ice cream analogy, let's assume the Board of Supervisors does have the authority to decide what ice cream flavors are offered at the annual ice cream social. Three of you get together at Starbucks on Saturday to discuss what flavors to offer next year. This should be an easy one. Is that a Brown Act violation? Right. Three of you got together and talked about something outside of an open public meeting, outside of your regularly-scheduled location, about something within your subject matter jurisdiction. That's a prohibited group meeting, that's the easy example. Now, let's say three of you all attended the same presentation by CCWD on local water issues, and all you did was attend and listen. Is that a Brown Act violation? No. Why not?
Yeah, it's on our jurisdiction.
Okay. It's, you're, well, I heard a number of different things. It's not, you're right, one of it is, it's not within, necessarily within your subject matter jurisdiction. More importantly, you're not conducting any business. You're part of a legislative body, but you're not conducting business, you're just there listening. You know, you want to make sure during breaks that you're not all getting together to talk about things that are within the board's subject matter jurisdiction, but you can attend, a majority of the board can attend an event, a social event, a ceremonial event, a class, and as long as you're just listening and all gathering the same information without discussing business, that's okay. But if you're meeting to discuss business as a group, that's a prohibited group meeting.
I would also just add, because of that example, because it was a CCWD meeting, that is another public agency where it is an open and public meeting that has been noticed and agendized, and has been, is in compliance with the Brown Act. So that would be another reason. It's a different agency, and it has complied with the Brown Act, so you would just be there as any member of the public listening.
Okay. Now let's get to some less intuitive Brown Act violations. And this is, these are areas, there's a, the name for this type of serial meeting, prohibited serial meeting, is the daisy chain serial meeting. And this is where you can accidentally wind up in a Brown Act violation. So let's say, and again, I'm picking D1, D2, D3, and trying to go through all of the supervisors. I had no thought whatsoever about the individuals that I was referring to, so no, nothing personal here. But let's say the D1 supervisor communicates with the D2 supervisor about his concerns about mint chip ice cream being served next year. There's no committee about ice cream, it's just one, D1 supervisor saying to D2 supervisor, "We really shouldn't serve mint chip." Is this by itself a Brown Act violation?
No.
No. Okay? It's just two people, two supervisors, talking about something within the subject matter jurisdiction. The next day, the D3 supervisor happens to email the D2 supervisor, asking his opinion about whether mint chip should be served at the ice cream social. And the D3 supervisor, the D2 supervisor says absolutely not. And I know the D1 supervisor agrees with me on this. Is that a Brown Act violation?
That's wrong.
That is? Okay. That's a prohibited serial meeting. Now, none of the three supervisors intentionally got together here to talk about the ice cream issue, but the result of this series of communications, even though there might be innocent supervisors involved, was that three board members started to know how each other was likely to vote on the issue. So the board, or the county, has committed a Brown Act violation, even though there might be somebody who'd had no idea that they were participating in one, because of that serial chain of events. So when you're discussing your point of view with even one other member of the legislative body, you need to be careful, because the expectation under the Brown Act is that the board will wait until the open public meeting to try to develop a collective consensus. And so you do need to be careful. You will be expected to take care, not, to ensure that your views are not being transmitted down the line to other, to other supervisors. And certainly, if two of you have communicated with each other about how you're likely to vote on an issue, make sure that neither... vote on an issue, make sure that neither of you communicate your thoughts or intentions on the matter with any other board member prior to the meeting. Oh, yeah, the most common mistake that, that legislative bodies make and the most common violation of the Brown Act is when somebody like Ms. Stedfelder I sends a memo to all of the board members, is that a Brown Act violation if one of us sends a memo to all of you? Right, because you're just receiving information from us, we're not talking to you about how each of you, what each of you might have said to us individually, but what would happen there, what's, what do you think the most common mistake is after we've sent that memo that creates a Brown? Reply all, reply all, keep your finger away from that button when, when staff sends information or a member of the public sends information out. Because once you've replied and you've replied with any sort of context about your opinions or thoughts or what you might do, at that point, a Brown Act violation has been committed. Okay, let's go to, spoken hub serial meeting. These prohibited meetings have fancier names than the, than the correct meetings, but hopefully that'll help you remember them. So here, instead of information being passed down the line from one supervisor to another, there's a central hub individual who's communicating information to multiple board members. So let's say the board appointed staff member, the chief ice cream official, learns from the D4 supervisor that he will be voting for Rocky Road to be the flavor offered at the next ice cream social. Smart supervisor, but that aside, okay.
Do you like that one?
And let's say the chief ice cream official then learns from the D5 supervisor at a separate meeting that he will also be voting for Rocky Road and mentions that the D4 supervisor is in agreement. The following week, the D1 supervisor tells the ice cream official that he'll be voting for mint chip, okay? And the ice cream official tells the D1 sup that she's surprised to hear that and she knows that D4 and D5 supervisors will not be in agreement with them. Is there a Brown Act violation? Right, and that's, that's, that's a spoken hub serial meeting. It doesn't matter that all of the individual supervisors were good and didn't meet together to discuss all of these things. The problem here is that a staff member, the ice cream official, wound up creating this Brown Act violation by communicating, resulting, communicating, a series of communications with different board members that resulted in the multiple board members learning how other board members were likely to vote on the issue. So again, doesn't matter if you all were innocent individually, the county has now exposed itself to liability for a Brown Act violation.
The primary issue is collective concurrence. So however you receive collective concurrence, that is what you need to be wary of.
All right.
D1 would have went with vanilla, not mint chip.
Rocky Road's good, come on.
All right. So we talked a little bit about what's not a meeting, again, I don't need to go through this again. All right, this is a biggie, social media, because, and I have, I have seen this happen, this is a really easy way, I think Supervisor Oliver remembers this, this is a really easy way for Brown Act violations to occur without necessarily a supervisor knowing it. So let's say there's a popular Facebook page on Calaveras County Ice Cream Politics, right? And we know there's at least a couple of those. So ice cream's a big deal, so most of you want to be members of this page, okay? Even if it's just to follow what's being said. Now, I don't know how many of you realize this, but these Facebook pages, you can usually find their membership and who's a member of this group, okay? So people will know unless the group has that hidden group, people will know that you're on that group, they can find that. So let's say that the D2 supervisor writes the following comment on the Facebook page, the Ice Cream Politics Facebook page. Warning, eating green ice cream may be harmful to your health. Even if it isn't, it certainly isn't cool, it has no business being at the annual board ice cream social. Okay? That statement's on there. The D3 supervisor replies, hear, hear. Three weeks later, the D4 supervisor learns about the Facebook page and joins and he only sees the original D2 comment, doesn't pay attention to any of the comments underneath. And he also says, hear, hear, not knowing, he didn't know that the D3 supervisor already said this, is there a Brown Act violation? There is. You've got three people on this page outside of an open public meeting, even just the words hear, hear, that show a potential. A collective consensus about an item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board.
But without the knowledge of the prior response.
Right, a lot of these, a lot of these.
It's an unintentional problem.
That's right. And that's, most of the Brown Act violations are unintentional, but the lack of intent does not keep the county from getting sued. And there are still attorney's fees available for a violation of the Brown Act even if it's not intentional. An intentional Brown Act violation can actually have criminal consequences for the, if they can pin it on one or more specific legislators. So one of the things you might want to do.
Did I understand that right? An unintentional Brown Act violation could be a criminal offense?
No.
We will get into the, the different remedies later in the presentation.
Yeah, an unintentional Brown Act violation can result in county liability.
County liability?
Yeah.
Not criminal.
So do check the membership of your social media pages before commenting and try to check to see whether other people have been commenting. Probably not, you know, probably be very careful when commenting on these public forums, especially if you know that there's other board members who are also in the same forum. Okay. Notice and posting of agendas.
Go back a page. It says not texting, emailing, or engaging. Shouldn't it be that?
Tech, particularly under the new San Jose law, certainly your texts and that does include all of those electronic communications. One thing that, that I wanted the board to know is particularly with social media, the law hasn't fully come up to speed with the technology. And so that is part of why we caution you, I know that every supervisor wants to be very active in all of various social media sites, but because the law technically, or typically I should say, takes a lot longer to catch up, things are still evolving.
So the reason for the note texting, emailing, et cetera, it's not that you're not allowed to do those things, the concern is that if you're doing it and you're at a meeting and somebody makes a PRA request, let's say for, or is accusing you, accusing you of talking to other board members while you're up there, because it was happening during a meeting, the court may be more likely to presume that whatever you had on your phone is, was actually part of some sort of public business and so.
Whether you were or not.
Right, and so, so a lot of times in those situations that the judge will look at your personal phone and decide whether or not it needs to be disclosed. So you're making your personal communications more vulnerable to being searched or subpoenaed or what have you if you're a member of the legislative body, you're in a meeting and you're texting somebody else. Again, that doesn't mean you're, it's not automatically a violation, but it, it could lead to them being subpoenaed or, or searched.
Yeah, key word on that would be the, another member of the, let's say, pardon.
It's, well, there, and again, since nobody knows because you're holding the phone.
I understand, but technically.
Right, but the concern is that you're speaking to each other.
I can't text, why, during a meeting or even after the meeting?
These, these are recommendations. We recommend that you be cautious when you are, when you are participating in Facebook interactions, when multiple board members may be members or viewing the Facebook posts. Also, it's recommended that you don't text, email, or engage in other forms of electronic communication during board meetings with members. I mean, the, the concern is that you're receiving a text message from the member of the public or from another board member on a topic that is on the agenda or that isn't on the agenda.
But that's still only two.
But if you're in the middle of having a public, if you're at your location having a meeting on an item on the agenda and you're having a private meeting on the same topic that with somebody else on your phone, that is violating the Brown Act because the meeting is supposed to be taking place openly and in the public.
And there are exceptions to that though.
We just want to caution you from texting with people.
But there are exceptions to that.
When you are in the middle of a meeting that is open and public, if you are on agenda number three, item number three, it, you should not be, you know, talking to a member of the public, another member of the board, you know, anything else regarding that item per se where you're garnering additional information on that item that, that is public information and should be stated publicly. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So you're saying if somebody's sitting in the back of the room and texts you up here at the DA's?
I would.
It hasn't happened, I have, I've not the one been the receiver of it up here, I'm just simply saying that would be a Brown Act violation.
I don't think.
Or could be.
It's an automatic Brown Act violation.
You don't think that it's an automatic Brown Act violation? These are things, because the social media realm is still changing, these are things that we recommend that you don't do.
It's best practices.
Right.
That's why mine goes to sleep because I.
Yeah, I mean if somebody's just saying, oh, you know, you put on your, turn on your mic, you know, it's, if somebody's just texting you to, to do that, you know, it's one thing, but again, the main, the main goal here is to prevent you from being in a situation where because you're the legislative body where somebody is going to require you to give up your personal devices or hand them over to a court. So, okay. Notice and posting, I think most of you know what the rules are here, is the agenda for an open public meeting has to be, to make it open and public. What makes the meeting open and public? That's the third question when it comes to the Brown Act. It's open and public if the agenda's posted 72 hours in advance, you're sticking to the items that are on the agenda, there's a brief description on the agenda of items of business, and the agendas have to be publicly accessible and distributed in advance to those who request copies, and I think your clerk takes care of most of those for you and knows how that works. Items not on the agenda. Obviously, no discussion or decision on items that have not been posted, as action items on the agenda can take place. Recently at the Planning Commission, there was something that was put on as an informational item, we couldn't take action on that item because it was agendized that way, we had to continue and come back as an action item. So you do have to be careful with how something is placed on the agenda, whether or not the public has a right to know 72 hours in advance, whether it's the type of action a decision will be made on or whether it's just informational. Members or staff can be directed to briefly respond to questions posed by the public that are off the agenda, but no board discussion of that item can, can really take place. On report out, there could be asking staff to put something on a future agenda, there can be an informal polling of the board about whether something should be brought back. Again, no substantive discussion about that.
I had an example of that today.
Correct.
That worked out and that was done properly.
And is there anything else there? Okay, public comment. Every agenda on a regular meeting has to have a, something on the agenda that states that there will be public comment. And the general public comment, members of the public may speak on any item of interest so long as it's within, within the subject area jurisdiction of the legislative body. Now, I understand that a lot of times, it's not always the case with the things that people are coming up to say, the board could, if it did so evenly, require that the public and general public comment limit itself to items that the board actually has jurisdiction over. But generally, it's very wide. If it's something that the county might be looking at in the future or something that the member of the public wants the board to consider in the future, even if it's not on the current horizon, they can talk about pretty much whatever they want as long as within your subject matter jurisdiction. The public gets to criticize you and harshly if they want to, and it's a very, very high standard to stop public speech during an open public meeting. So it, you know, the board can, the board chair can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. If things become flat out threatening, intimidating, what have you, then the board, or foul language, the board can, the board chair can stop it, but if a board member is, or if a member of the public is just very assertively and passionately criticizing one or all of you for something that you've done, that is the price of doing business, the public can do that. The public can also criticize other people who have chosen to participate in a public forum. Again, the chair can draw the line at flat out intimidation, threats, screaming, disruption, what have you, but simply making a comment that's highly critical, even scathing about somebody else who spoke in public comment or sent in a comment, they can do that. That is, free speech at, at town hall meetings is highly protected. It can be difficult for, for the board to listen to, but it is something where there's a high standard before it can be stopped. Let's see.
So you don't have to be.
And I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Stedfeld. Any questions about that before we go and get into closed session? Anything that I have to say before I turn it over to Ms. Stedfeld?
We're all subject matter of jurisdiction.
No, I know about you.
I, I, great job, Julia.
Trying to keep it entertaining at this late hour, okay.
There's mine.
Okay, on to closed sessions. Closed sessions are very narrow exceptions to the general open meeting rule. Basically, if it doesn't fit into one of the very narrow exceptions under the government code, it has to be heard in open session. Some of the, the government code is very clear on what is allowable to go into closed session. Some of the enumerated closed session items would include existing litigation, anticipated or exposure to litigation, initiation of litigation, real estate negotiations, labor negotiations, and various personnel decisions that are within the appointment authority of the board. One thing that we do see is if a legislative body, so I'm, I'm including committees and commissions here that you appoint, do not have the authority to actually act in any of the enumerated closed session areas, then there really, there isn't a basis for that committee or commission to go into closed session. That doesn't apply to the board because the board obvious is the, is a legislative body of the county and has ultimate authority over all of these areas, but I'm really talking to the public that might be watching or that participate in committees and commissions that may want to participate in a closed session in that committee or commission. It's a very rare, rare occasion when a valid closed session item falls within their jurisdiction. So the standard for closed session is not whether the subject matter is sensitive or embarrassing or even controversial. It's, it's basically whether the topic fits within the enumerated statutory exceptions in the government code. Discussions in closed session must stay within the parameters and the topic of the item. Closed session is very confidential and any information that is provided to the legislative body in closed session is protected by various confidential provisions in the Brown Act. Closed session is very much like Vegas, what happens in closed session stays in closed session. Only the board as a whole can waive a privilege and only the board as a whole can divulge any confidential information that you received in closed session, yes?
Scenario. Closed session, one board member absent. Action taken or no action taken? That absent board member can be briefed by anybody else that attended that meeting?
Typically, what I would do is there, if there is a board member who is absent from a closed session item, I or whoever the attorney is who oversaw the closed session would bring that, that board member in because they need to know the. because they need to know the information for future action. So many times, we would brief that board member so they are aware of what is going on.
What about another board member?
I would not recommend that.
Is that a Brown Act violation or a recommendation? Or is it, yeah, it's not a, it's, it's, it's a confidentiality standard on the meeting, correct?
Remember, each of you individually don't have any authority to act. You have the authority to act as a body. And so, again, if there is a board member who is, is not present and they need additional information, I encourage typically staff, a staff member would bring that board member up to speed, particularly counsel. There are various privileges as it relates to board members and counsel and closed sessions.
Just want clarification.
I have a question concerning that. If a board member recuses himself from an item in closed session.
Oh, that's another scenario.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That board member does not receive any information on anything in that closed session?
Correct. Even from staff.
Just like, I refuse myself, I leave, I know nothing. Like my dad would before, you guys.
You have never came and told me that the meeting was. That's the reason I left, so I'm not, so I'm totally clear of it.
And we've never felt.
When a board member recuses themselves, whether it be from any item, particularly closed sessions, staff does not provide any confidential information to that board member because they are recused and they are not privy to the confidential information in that closed session.
When you're recused, you're a member of the public. And so if the member of the public doesn't get to know what happened in closed session, then you wouldn't be there.
Until it's announced out if anything happened.
Correct.
That's interesting. So in a case of a recusal, you can then join the public?
Sometimes, well, there have been board members that have.
I watched them do it.
Themselves and spoken in public comments.
I just want to clarify because in that situation.
Not closed session, this is open session.
We're on closed session.
Yeah, we're on closed session.
And that, that is a very different animal than.
Yeah, you're right. We're talking open session versus closed session.
Correct. So I want, I want the discussion to stay focused on, on closed sessions because that's where we are. No, no, you're fine. That's where I am.
Yes, I go outside and watch you guys on TV.
Okay, so consequences for Brown Act or potential Brown Act violations. There are a range from civil penalties to criminal prosecution for violation of the Brown Act. For civil actions, any interested party or, or the DA can enforce the Brown Act provisions. Typically, a civil action is brought to either invalidate actions taken in violation of the Act or to prevent future violations. As Julie indicated earlier, when you deal with civil actions of this, of this nature, there are attorney's fees that are available to prevailing plaintiffs. Also, one thing that is not in this slide, but I wanted to, but I wanted to clarify that the board does have the ability to voluntarily resolve or cure a potential violation. Many times, that is by re-noticing a situation, rehearing a matter when there, when there is a potential doubt whether the Brown Act requirements were met. There are ways that the board can potentially cure it before it becomes a problem. Another avenue for enforcement by the DA is a criminal penalty. The primary issue with criminal sanctions is the board member's intent and whether a reasonable person could infer that they intended to actually withhold public information or violate the Brown Act meeting laws. And so it's actually a very high standard. Jurisdictions don't see criminal penalties or sanctions brought forward very often because of the intent element. So finally, the takeaway here is that I would like the board, or the takeaway here is that the Brown Act is to really help promote transparency and to allow the public to participate while you discuss, debate, and decide issues of public importance. And also, I wanted to remind the board and all the viewers out there that participate in committees and commissions that my office is available to the committees and commissions and, as you know, the board. So if, when in doubt, if you have any question about Brown Act, my office is certainly open and available to you to provide additional assistance. Do you have any questions?
So for the people who are on boards, committees, and commissions, can they individually call your office and ask for advice?
That would be typically the committee or the commission on a regularly scheduled item would give direction to their chair to contact our office. Typically, it is the chair of whatever that committee or commission is that would reach out to our office.
So then they would want to have it on their agenda and then direct an individual to contact you?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I suppose, it could be that an individual member of the committee or commission might choose to ask a question and we'll, we'll, our office answer it.
Typically, we have had, our office is open to any member of any committee or commission. The concern is when you have individuals, because just like the board, committees and commissions as individuals don't have authority. They act within the body. And so if it is a single individual who is asking for some clarification, we typically do like to have some concurrence that it's the body that's asking it. It's not this individual member. It would, it wouldn't stop our office from providing service if a member did come. But if we started to see that it was being abused or it was, or it was a regular occurrence where it was clear that it was a single member rather than the concurrence of the body wanting the information, then we would ask for some verification that it is the body asking for the information.
Okay, does that conclude the presentation, counsel?
That is the, that is the finish of the presentation. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Any further staff, would you like to report out? I'm sorry, I can't.
Do you have a public comment on this item?
Oh, I do. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Wilkie, how are you?
Just want to say thank you. Really good. I saw it in the agenda packet, looked over the presentation, and it's very informative, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. McManus. I thought.
I think one thing missing from the Brown Act is meetings shouldn't go past nine o'clock.
I wish we had that capability at times.
You do. It's entirely optional. Let me see where I left off. I'm having difficulty because the staples is at the opposite kitty corner from where I normally staple paper. And I'm sorry, I can't talk as fast as anyone else, so I guess I get my time is running. The intent of the Brown Act, of course, is about communications. At least it was stated on page two. And I wanted to clarify, that's all communications, whether it be voice, email, texts, smoke signals, Morse code. Whatever goes on in a public meeting is a communication. Am I correct on that?
If it is in fact a meeting, then it is, it is any, any communication as, if it's in a public meeting, yes.
Counsel, why don't we hear Mr. McManus's questions first and not shortchange him on his time?
Okay, the other one was, would all links in a daisy chain have to disclose their before-and-after conversations with everyone in the daisy chain? Otherwise, how would you know if it was a daisy chain? So everyone would have to be aware that everyone was in the chain or at least a majority of the chain would have to know that.
Once again, counsel.
Hold off on there. And as far as on the social media, I know that it's, it's an emerging technology and kind of tough to deal with. I've noticed a lot of social technology activity going on during the meetings and wondered that if during a public meeting, that communication is occurring, that is public record and that those, that public record, it shouldn't be held off for a PRA later, but that should be read into the record live at the time because it affects the discussion that's going on, just like if you were speaking with your voice. Now you're speaking with an electronic device. And I would want to know if, if that is going on, what is, what options do the public have? Do we rise to a point of order and ask that all secret communications being conducted electronically be read into the record? Or how would that best be handled so that the public has a complete record of what's going on, not just the people here, but on TV and minutes and whatever the official records are? That all those communications should be read into the public record, whether it's devices given to the clerk of the board or to the CAO or some, someone else who's not part of the legislative body or county council? And just read them in for whatever, whatever time those things, texts, tweets, whatever, existed during the public meeting, not in closed session, not on breaks, when you're in a regular session.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Counsel, you want to address those or?
Yeah, I was trying to make sure that I hit all of the points. With the daisy chain, I mean, again, whether it be the spoken hub or, or the daisy chain, it's really about gaining concurrence among a majority of the board members. So if, if supervisor A talks to supervisor B and says, okay, this is, this is what I'm going to do on this agenda item. I support it. I hope you do too. Supervisor B goes on to supervisor C and says, hey, I talked to supervisor A and this is, this is what he's going to do and this is what I, you know, I, I support what he's going to do. That third supervisor is a quorum. And so that's where you see the, the daisy chain because it's, it's gaining concurrence and, and it is relaying information and the other board member's position on an item that is coming before the legislative body.
And it doesn't matter whether some of the supervisors that came before were innocent and didn't know. That might protect them if they were being accused of an intentional violation. But it wouldn't, if somehow this series of communications became known to a member of the public, would not protect the county from liability. So you can have, that's what I wanted to try to drive home there. You can have a county Brown Act violation without any one individual necessarily being responsible for it or intentionally creating it. The county could still be liable.
And the other issue, the other question that was raised, I think that some of the confusion is between public records and the Brown Act. Public records and the Public Records Act is a very different set of rules and a different set of laws than the Brown Act. The Brown Act is about open meetings and allowing the public to participate in the open meetings before the board actually takes action. So in the slide where we talked about not participating in texting or, or emailing with a member of the public on an item that is on the agenda, that is a concern because you are going to be taking action on that. And so that, that correspondence is a public record unless there's some other privilege that would preclude disclosure, whether it be attorney-client privilege or some other privilege that would not make it a public record. Whether, when Mr. McManus indicated items that were presented to the board clerk and whether that correspondence should be read into the record, any written correspondence, excuse me, any written correspondence is already in the record. That is certainly within the board chair's discretion on whether you want to actually read the written comment into the record or not, but the submitting it written is in the record for all, for all intents and purposes.
It's a public document.
It is a public document and I know that the board clerk does document it and it, it is made available to the public for future reference and identification. So that is, that is something that the public will have access to.
So just for clarification, any document presented during an open meeting, publicly agendized meeting, handed to the clerk for the board's review is a public document?
Yes, it's part of the record.
All right, just want to make sure everybody's on the same page on that.
I will, I mean, in the Planning Commission, every now and again during an appeal hearing, we'll have somebody saying, I forgot to bring my documents, here's my computer. We're trying to change the rules to not make that even allowed because it's really hard for the record. We can't keep that person's.
That's correct.
Computer, so it's better if they're providing the actual document as the submission than to have something that you can't really keep.
So, so I have a question. If I'm sitting in a meeting after 11 o'clock at night and I want to text my wife to say, honey, I'm not in an accident, I'm safe, I'm still in the meeting, looks like it's going to end, you're, you're telling me I shouldn't do that?
No, that would, I mean, that's purely personal and it is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. The concern is if you are communicating with a member of the public or, or a member of the board about an item that is, that is before the board.
So, right, I mean, if somebody's in the audience and they happen to see somebody on their text and it shows up Gary Tofanelli, then there's some evidence that there's a conversation going on. There is no, I mean, that wasn't, that slide about the text was in the best practices slide. I mean, the idea, no, that's not automatically, if you text your wife, I'm going to be home late, it's not automatically, there's no right of, of anybody to just march in and say, give me your phone or read it into the record. It's not an automatic Brown Act violation. It's just that because you're in the middle of having a public meeting and you're on the legislative body, you are potentially more vulnerable to that type of a challenge.
Is, is staff under the same, that sits up here with us?
The Brown Act doesn't apply to staff because we don't make decisions.
They're not a legislative body.
Correct.
So, so, but in turn, if I text Diane saying, you know, item 14, I think, coming up is, you need to change the verbiage or something on it, is that communication okay?
If it's happened, if it's during a public meeting, it's probably better to just raise that. If that's actually an agenda item, to raise it in the open public meeting. I mean, that's, that otherwise.
Yeah, I'm just giving an example like mint ice cream.
For example, if it's just purely a procedural question to make sure that you, you didn't, you had a question about something procedurally, it's not substantive, you could certainly communicate with Diane or Tim or myself for clarification because you aren't trying to gain concurrence on a substantive matter that's before the board.
But, you know, if you, if you text or email Diane saying, God, I really hope everybody votes no on this item and she then forwards it to everybody else during the meeting, then you would have a potential.
Because I would tell everybody to vote for mint chip, I got to tell you.
If I tell my wife I've been in the Brown Act briefing for an hour and 10 minutes.
Is there any other further comments? Great presentation. Thank you very much, county counsel. If there's no further action before the board, I'll adjourn the meeting.